Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Suffolk zoning board of appeals meeting for what is today? I never remember. Thursday, January 9th, 2025. It is 7:00 PM. It is time for us to open the meeting. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. My name is Bruce Simon. I am the acting chair. Our chair Barry Tesemman was unable to be here tonight, so I'm filling in for him. First up on the agenda, we have 20 Wayne Avenue Suffolk Auto Sales. This this item has been before this board a little bit. Last month, we had a long hearing about it. We had a draft decision emailed to all the members of the board for their consideration. Have all the members seen the draft decision?
Yes.
Yes.
Do any of the members, would any members like to add anything to the draft?
Not I.
Not I.
No.
No.
Having said that, is there a motion to adopt the draft as written?
I motion.
I second.
Mr. Marx's motions, Ms. Wilson's seconds. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to take a roll.
A roll call. Okay, Mr. Zabowski.
Yes.
Mr. Adwar.
Yes.
Mr. Marx.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That is five, nothing. There are no opposed. Motion passes. Okay. Take one moment to allow our attorney to join us. Up next on the agenda, 21 Cypress Road. It's Mr. Burns here. Mr. Burns, would you please go to the podium? We'll swear you in.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes. I mean, that's this.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Suffolk will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, January 9th, 2025 at 7:03 PM or as soon thereafter as possible. Checking the time, it is 7:03. At the Suffolk Village Hall, 61 Washington Avenue, Suffolk, New York, 10901. The applicant Gerald Burns of 21 Cypress Road, Suffolk, New York, is seeking a variance from the requirements of section 266-36.1A of the Village of Suffolk zoning code entitled Commercial Vehicles in Residential Districts to permit the parking of a commercial vehicle on a residential lot that exceeds the permissible size and location requirements of the code. The premises affected is located at 21 Cypress Road, Suffolk, New York, which is situated on the east side of Cypress Road and is approximately 75 feet south of Sylvan Way. The properties are listed on the Village of Suffolk and Town of Ramapo tax maps as section 55.54-1-45. Mr. Burns, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Gerald Burns, 21 Cypress Road, Suffolk, New York.
Thank you, sir. What brings you here tonight?
I'm just applying for a variance to be able to park my limo in my driveway on occasion, not all the time. My job varies from day to day, and what I'm going to use for tomorrow, I bring home tonight. I have a, just a Lincoln SUV outside. I never know what it's going to be until the day before, and I start work from my house. I could be going upstate. I could be going anywhere the next day, and it's just my livelihood, and I just, the vehicle in question, see, it could be, it could be an SUV, it could be a sedan, it could be a stretch, it could be a van. On occasion, it's a limo shuttle bus, which is a little bit taller and a little bit longer than the bylaw, whatever you want to call it, and it's not wider. It's a little bit longer and a little bit taller, but I can get it all the way behind the house line, back it right up, so you can't see it at all. If you come down Cypress Road from the school end, you can't even see it. If you come up Cypress Road, you can see from the front door up, so it's pretty well hidden, and it's a good-looking vehicle to begin with. It's not an eyesore, and it's just, it's my livelihood. So, and again, it's not, it's only on occasion. It's, you know, I've had it once in the last month, this past Tuesday night. So, and as far as I know, none of my neighbors have a problem with it. I've never had anybody who had a problem with it, except for the guy who wrote me the summons. That was that.
Except for what?
Except for getting a summons. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
I think it's time to open public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Adwar, motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Wilson's seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would any of you from the public like to come forward and address this matter? It's okay. You all can. Okay. Being that there is no one from the public that would like to speak on this, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Ms. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Marx. Board members.
Did you say all in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. So, before you go further, I just want to explain a little bit about procedurally how this got here, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Burns, but so you received the summons for this, what did you, the shuttle bus?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know the size of the shuttle bus?
Length of it, it's about 30 feet.
Okay. And any of the other vehicles, are they beyond the limits?
No.
Okay. So, it would only be for that one shuttle?
It's only the one.
And you received the summons and you went to court, correct?
Right. I got a couple of warnings pre-COVID, and then it went away, and then a couple of months ago, in July, I think it was, I got, I guess, the third strike, which was the summons.
Okay. So, you went to court, and then you, you're not really appealing, you didn't file this as an appeal to the court action. You're asking for a variance, right?
Right. Well, I went to court to see what the result was going to be.
So, for all intents and purposes, it's a little bit of both. He's asking for a variance from the code to allow him to park there, but it really is also an appeal of the, of the court action, if you will.
Correct.
So. And again, I'm not sure if the board is familiar with the section of the code.
I was hoping you would do.
Oh, okay. So, the section of the code that he's appealing is 266-36.1 subdivision A. It says only one commercial vehicle not exceeding 22 feet in length or eight feet in height or seven feet in width may be parked on a lot in a residential district. So, I believe Mr. Burns' testimony is the only one of the vehicles that violates this, and would be that bus. The other commercial vehicles, I suppose you could park behind the front line of your house. Is that right?
I'm sorry?
You can park the other commercial vehicles that you bring home behind the front?
Oh, yeah. None of them break the rules, so.
So, if you have a commercial vehicle, like he's describing, other than the bus, and it's parked beyond the front line of the house and meets the size requirements, there's no need for variance. He's asking for the variance for the bus because that exceed, even though perhaps it goes beyond the front line, it still exceeds the size requirements. So, that's procedurally where you are.
It doesn't go beyond the front line, no.
Okay.
Back and right. You have pictures.
Right. Even, I said, even assuming it goes beyond the front line.
Okay.
It is fully behind the front line.
Correct.
It's still be, the size is too big for the stature. Did you have another question?
Nope. We're just going to open it to the board members. Mr. Adwar.
Good evening. You stated in your reasons for the variance request, quote, "My car remains parked in the warehouse six days a week." Is that correct?
Yes. Whatever days, it's usually, it's not every day, but.
And then you stated just before that you find out the night before what the job?
Usually. Yeah, sometimes I get a two-day notice, whatever, or sometimes I keep a car for multiple days, which is happening right now.
And BBZ, BB, is it BBZ?
Correct.
Located in Bergenfield, New Jersey?
Bergenfield, yes.
Do you know how many miles that is away from Cypress Road?
Um, it's 30 miles, 30-minute ride. It's about 22 miles, something like that.
21 miles.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Zabowski, anything?
Yes, I did have an opportunity to go and visit the site and see exactly, I asked the, you know, if there was any issues with other residents complaining about, you know, being a, quote, "an eyesore," standing out in the community. Said he had no issues with his neighbors, you know. I, at the time, did not see any issues with it. It was going to be sporadic, very rare, you know, so he seems to have it well kept. I thought at first the driveway was going to need to be expanded, but he said, "No, the driveway does not need to be expanded. It's going to be, it will be the same. It doesn't need to be, nothing needs to really happen with the driveway."
Yeah, I would, I could also add that I visited the property as well, and similar to the other board member, is that it looked like it can fit behind there. It's not really an eyesore. It is parked on the side of the property, not clearly visible to folks coming down the road. Again, no issues by neighbors. It seemed pretty, pretty straight to me.
Ms. Wilson?
I agree with everything they've, everybody's said. It seems pretty innocuous when it is pushed back. Like you said, you don't see it from the one direction at all, and then in the other direction, it's there, but it's not obvious.
Exactly.
So, I have no issue.
Then I guess I'm going to be the outlier. We don't do clean sweeps here very often. My issue is not whether your neighbors are bothered by it. My issue is not whether it fits in the space, and I did visit the house, and I did see the side where you would be parking it, and I'm sure it does fit. I will trust you on that. My issue is this village used to not allow any commercial vehicles at a residence, period, and over a long time, that was modified to allow for the, the numbers that Mr. Magrino read before, 22 feet in length, eight feet, all those numbers, and that went through a long process and a long thing, and personally, I think that's a fair compromise. I don't personally see a reason to allow anything beyond that.
Want to take a poll of the board, please?
You stated clean sweep. I was not, I maybe I should clarify myself. I was wondering, would it be possible for you to pick up the bus or limo the morning of your job?
It's, is it possible?
Yes.
Well, it would be possible.
Okay, thank you.
But it would be major inconvenience. I mean, I might be going to Middletown, New York. I have to be in Cedar Grove, New Jersey tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM, so I get up at 4:30, leave my house. I mean, yeah, it's possible.
It's only for the bus, right?
I'm sorry?
It's only for that bus?
The variance?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And like I said, I've had it once in the last month.
It's it?
Let me ask another question. Now, you say commercial vehicle. It's, it doesn't have a commercial plate. It's a livery vehicle. So, technically, it's not a commercial vehicle. It's not a truck. It's not a dump truck. It's not, it's, you know, it's a, it's a livery vehicle. It has a livery plate.
Yes, that means it's a vehicle for hire.
Okay.
That makes it a commercial vehicle.
Okay. That's my question.
In a month, how many, how often is the, is the, is the bus there on, what would you say, on a monthly basis? Twice a month?
Like I said, I've had it once in the last month, so.
Very sporadic.
Is there a time of year where it's more often?
I'm sorry?
Is there a time of year where it's, like, the summertime? Is it more often?
It's just, I mean, it's busy season all the time there. It's, you know, weddings, whatever I use it for. It's tough to say, and I'm not the only guy. They have six buses, you know, so they, it's, so it's tough to say, honestly.
You could put restrictions on it if, yes. I'm sorry, one other thing that you, as Mr. Adwar points out, you mentioned a stretch limo also?
Yeah.
Is that beyond the length?
No, it's like 22 feet.
I'm sorry?
No, no, it's not.
Okay.
No.
Do you want to poll the board about?
I think so, yes.
Where the board stands and whether, you know, one thing I'll put out there is based what I'm hearing about the questions would be perhaps some type of limit of, you know, no more than X times per week, per month, whatever, if the board's inclined to grant it. That's whatever.
Okay. Mr. Marx, your thoughts?
If you were to poll me, I would approve him.
Okay. Would you be interested in any kind of limitation on frequency?
Certainly, we can talk about that.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
I would vote to approve. The issue of limiting the number of days seems difficult to decide and difficult to enforce. I mean, I'd be willing to have a conversation about it, but my initial reaction is to approve.
Mr. Zabowski?
Yes, I would concur. My, my, I would vote to approve. I don't think I would put a restriction on the days, how many days, because it's probably, you can't really determine it, but in this situation, I'd vote to approve.
Mr. Adwar?
I would vote to disapprove, and I agree with Ms. Wilson. I don't think it's possible to, to monitor the restrictions.
And I think I've been clear that I would vote to disapprove as well. So, just on a poll, on an informal poll, we are three-two.
So, you can take a vote, or if somebody had a motion.
Is there a motion? I vote, I vote to, a motion to approve. Mr. Zabowski, is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Marx is a second.
One second. So, again, in terms of restrictions, the one restriction I would make sure is to ensure that remains beyond the front line of the house. The variance is for, with respect to the size, and again, we're treating this as an area variance, so it's as to the size and that it would be permitted, provided it's beyond the front line. I would recommend that be included in the decision.
I have a piece of tape that I put on my, above my garage door, so when I'm backing up, it's nighttime, and nobody else is around, as soon as that tape gets right here, I know to stop, and it's, and it's behind the house, and it's just before my shed.
Okay. So, you want to take a poll of the board on the motion?
Okay.
Yea or nay on the motion?
Another poll or?
No, no, just a poll, a vote, yes.
Okay.
Poll the board on its vote, asking each member.
Mr. Marx?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
I approve.
Mr. Adwar?
No.
Mr. Zabowski?
Approve.
So, the informal?
And you? No, that's not informal. That's the actual vote.
Oh, that's the actual vote. I vote no. Three-two, the motion carries. Congratulations.
Okay. So, there'll be a formal written decision that'll be, and there'll be a written decision, a formal written decision issued by the board next time, and that will have that condition in there, just that you're parking behind the lot.
Okay.
All right.
You're done.
That's it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Move on to our second item. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, January 9th, or as soon, at 7:05 or as soon thereafter as possible at Village Hall. The applicant JP Morgan Chase Bank, located at 67 Lafayette Avenue in Suffolk, is seeking a variance from the requirements of section 266-23 of the Village of Suffolk zoning code entitled Dimensional Requirements to Permit the Installation of Solar Carports That Exceeds the Permissible Maximum Development Lot Coverage As Provided For in the Code. Premises affected is located at 67 Lafayette Avenue in Suffolk, situated on the south side of Lafayette Avenue, also known as New York State Route 59, is approximately zero feet from the intersection of Park Avenue. Properties are listed on the Suffolk and Town of Ramapo tax maps as section 55.35-2-46-47 and 48. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. I'm Brian Powers with Black &amp; Veatch.
Can't hear you. You're going to have to speak closer.
Sorry. My name is Brian Powers. I'm with Black &amp; Veatch. We were contracted by JP Morgan Chase to project manage this. My office address is?
You have to speak louder.
Is this on?
It's on.
It's on, yeah.
It's the room.
Okay. Again, my name is Brian Powers. Is that, is that working?
A little better.
Great. Yeah, I'm with Black &amp; Veatch. We were contracted by JP Morgan Chase to project manage this project and others across the country similar to it. My office is at 45 Eisenhower Drive in Paramus, New Jersey.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay. Tell us about the project, please.
The, the project JP Morgan Chase is looking at going greener in their facilities, and what they're doing is installing solar panels at high volume of their branch offices. Our original scope was on offices that had a structurally, both the structurally sound and space requirements for rooftop solar facilities. Once those projects were exhausted, JP Morgan had us move to a carport-type scenario in the parking lots of the facilities where they did have, have parking lots, which is where we are tonight. My understanding of this project is that although the property operates as a single property, it's actually three separate properties that were never combined. JP Morgan bought all three properties back in the early 60s, and has, it's been operated de facto as a, as a single property. The, the two carports that will be going into, or proposing to put into the parking lot, one is in that, I'll call it the smaller parking lot next to the ATM building that sits immediately behind the bank proper building itself, and the second one is a little bit larger along the back edge of that, of the parking lot, going, running parallel to Park Avenue. The one by the, the bank in the smaller parking lot will be perpendicular to Park Avenue.
And you're in, you're in the CB district, is that right?
Uh, yes.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong. The way I'm reading it, I see in the submission, I don't think you signed it, but somebody else signed it.
Yeah, the way, the way my company is set up, the, the program team for this project is based out of Portland, Oregon, but.
No, that's fine. It was dated November 14th of 2024. It's saying that the amount of coverage that you're going to have is 75%. Is that right?
Including the bank building and?
Right.
The other thing, yes.
Right. And the requirement in that zone is 70%.
Correct.
Right. So, it's, it's only a 5% difference is what I'm pointing out to the board. I just wanted, it wasn't clear from the building inspector's determination. So, the requirement in that zone is 70%, and they're asking for 75 because of the, I guess, the addition of the solar panels. And one thing, it's already received site plan, like a preliminary site plan approval from the planning board that's kind of come here for this variance in order for it to proceed further.
Yes, and just, I don't know if further clarification needs as far as the lot coverage. These structures really just have a roof, so yes, there's coverage to the lot, but it's not as if it was a, a building structure. So, the base of the, or the surface of the land as it exists now won't be changing other than the support columns to hold up this facility.
Right. So, existing is, I think you had it here somewhere. I think existing is 72.8%? Something like that?
I will say yes, but I know it's in that range. I don't know the exact number.
Right. That's what that letter says, that currently it's 72.8, the max is 70, and they're asking for 75. So, that would be the variance.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Motion. Mr. Adwar, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Wilson. Would anybody from the public like to address this matter? Seeing as there's such a clamor to come forward to the microphone, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I motion.
Mr. Marx, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Zabowski. All in favor?
Aye.
By the way, I did not all in favor for the opening, so let's do that first to be official. Aye.
Aye twice.
Okay. Board members, are there any questions?
I have a question for Mr. Magrino. I'm looking at the development coverage. I just don't want the verbiage of the amendment to be wrong. It says the development coverage requirement is 70%, and the existing and proposed for one lot is 93.3, which increases to 94.7. The other lot is 81.7 and increases to 83.5.
Where is that? That's why I was trying to look.
In the bulk table. You have the bulk table?
No. I don't know why it was in the.
I, I think the board member is, I'll say both correct and incorrect, if I may phrase it that way. From a single lot perspective, I think your numbers are, are correct. From the overall, where the three lots that currently make up the property exist as one, I, I would say, say it's not. So.
It doesn't sound as yet. I understand, but we do have to treat it.
There's always been a question of whether it's this one property or multiple properties, and it's gone back and forth.
Did you find it wrong?
I have, I have the.
You have the chart, this one, on page four.
Right. I have the plan, but I guess the issue is, I'm not embarrassed to say I have a difficulty reading it.
We're not 25 anymore, my friend.
Speak freely.
You're 23. Your time's coming.
I can't read that.
Take your phone.
I do have a thing on my phone.
Just bear with us one moment, sir. No, he's got.
Oh, good. Thank you.
High school seniors, this will not be too far away for you.
I'm not embarrassed.
Especially if you go to graduate school and you're poring over deep, detailed books.
Right. So, I'm not sure where they got, I was trying to figure, that is what the bulk table says, but I'm trying to figure out where they got the 75.
Yeah, in, in reading the notes that I was given, I think that relates to the combination of the two lots that make up the parking lot and does not include the lot where the bank building sits.
Which has a lot of grass.
Right.
Right.
Right. So.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
My understanding from, from what I've been given here is that the coverage in the, the two parking lot lots, if you will, is 72.8% currently, and we'd be adding roughly about 330, 340 square feet of coverage on the top, which I guess we're using for the lot coverage, which would increase it to the roughly 75% number the attorney mentioned previously.
And are they both, they're both owned by the same entity?
Yeah, all three lots are owned by Chase. They purchased them in bulk back in the early 60s.
They can merge them. That would have made it.
Apparently, they're, from the, the notes I was given, there was a, sometime around the mid-60s to combine all the lots into one, and it just kind of died on the vine. We have no idea why or what happened to it, and it was never acted upon, and it's been operating as, you know, three separate physical lots acting as one lot.
All right. So, I guess, as Ms. Wilson's indicated, if you're applied to do it, I would address them as two separate variances.
Right.
Just so that there's no misunderstanding, and it would be, you know, for lot 47, as you're saying, and what they're saying is it's existing 93.3, and I think you said this, the change would be to 94.3. and what they're saying is, it's existing 93.3, and I think you said this, the change would be to 94.2, existing 81.7 to 81 point, I'm sorry, 83.5, and that's for Lot 46. So I don't know what the board, if the board's inclined to do granted or not granted, but...
Yeah, I, I believe the higher density number that the board member mentioned is if you include the bank building, which basically sits on almost the entire lot, or a good portion of that, so that...
Yeah, I mean, this is a technical
Yeah.
thing on the paper, but in terms of the reality of what's there, there's grass there, so...
So, Rob, in addition, if you look at the front yard requirement, it says the minimum is 15, and both lots, the setback is eight and a half, so we would need variances for their front yard also?
The, the building inspector did not indicate that.
Okay.
He only mentioned development coverage, so...
The lots on Park Ave, the, the one carport that will be kind of perpendicular to Park Avenue, and that small lot is back well in excess of the 15 feet. The carport at the rear of the property along Park, and that thing, is much closer to the back lot line.
Actually, the eight and a half feet is to the existing ATM building, so I guess that's grandfathered in.
Yeah.
Uh, well, yeah, they didn't identify it as pre-existing, non-conforming.
Okay.
But it is existing, yeah, so he did not mention that, it becomes in, you know...
Well, it is pre-existing, non-conforming, that's all.
It changes.
Okay. Okay. Members, what is your feeling about this? Mr. Zabowski?
I just have some general questions. What is the life expectancy of the panels when they're put in?
That's, that's a good question. I don't know if I have a direct answer for that, because the panels have been upgraded multiple times since solar came into existence in facilities like this. But, um, you know, what we're looking at is something that, that would have a 20-year lifespan before they would need to be changed out. Again, that's what I'm, that's the information I'm given, so...
Thank you. Mr. Adwar?
I agree with the County Rockland Department of Planning, I would approve.
Ms. Wilson?
I have no issue. The increase in coverage is actually only because the supports are around the perimeter of the parking lot, which is increasing the coverage. I have a, just a question, though. How much power is this going to generate that the building would use, you know, 50% less electric, or how much does it generate?
It, it's varied from facility to facility, from somewhere in the low 30s to about 65% depending upon the facility. This facility, it's anticipated just under 40% that it would offload the supply from the grid coming into the bank.
So you're saying it'll decrease their electrical by 40%?
That's, that's what the numbers are showing right now.
Okay, Mr. Marx?
I think the bigger issue really is, I mean, where we stand now with, you know, power consumption and that, that the grid itself is being offloaded, this, I think, is, is the, the bigger benefit.
Right.
I see no issue, no questions.
Okay. I have no issue, no questions as well. So is there a motion to approve?
I will make said motion.
Ms. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Adwar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No? Please note that I did remember to do the all-in-favor this time. Okay, you are approved, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, adopting the minutes of the December 5th, 2024 ZBA meeting, just one month ago. Are there any questions about the minutes? Members?
None.
Yep. Somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the minutes.
Second.
Ms. Wilson and Mr. Adwar, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No? Is there any old business to discuss? Any new business to discuss? Is there any reason to ask our attorney to take a side for legal counsel advice? No? Seeing as there is none of that, is there a motion to, oh, before we do that, we have our next meeting, which we...
It's already set for the 20th?
It is already set, let's just announce it on the record.
And do you want to set March 20th? And at March 20th?
Yes, we have February 20th already set. Would we like to set March 20th as well?
Yep.
Is there a motion to close? By the way, yes, we're setting March 20th, nobody opposed. Is there a motion to close?
Make a motion.
Mr. Adwar, second?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No, thank you all.